This, of course, is a pre-special session for legislative forum for the pre-special session that's coming up in August 18th. We appreciate our senators and two delegates for taking the time out of their busy schedule. What we're going to do is I want to make a couple of brief comments, and then I'm going to introduce each one of the elected officials and give them two to three minutes to make some opening comments. And then we're going to open it up for questions and answers, and we'll run this all the way through till 12 noon. So first of all, again, thank you all very much for the time you're taking to dialogue with us today, but more importantly, thank you for all that you do at the General Assembly and throughout the year in representing us, the citizens of Hampton Roads so well. I know that you know that we are the Hampton Roads Chamber. We're very proud of the fact that we are a U.S. Chamber of Commerce, five-star accredited chamber, which means that operationally, we're in the top 1% of all chambers in the nation. And I also know that you know that we are nonpartisan, but very pro-business. In fact, we say we are unapologetically pro-business. And it's very important that we try to protect our business community right now and enable them to navigate the challenges of this pandemic and come out the other end even stronger than they were going into this pandemic in March. And so we know that you, as our representatives, are cognizant of that. We are here to remind you of the impact of any potential legislation on our businesses. And again, we just need to be sure that especially as we go through this pandemic, we don't put additional regulatory burdens on our business community. So with that, I'd like to introduce each of our representatives here and then give them two or three minutes to comment. I want to start with Senator Monty Mason. Senator Mason proudly represents Virginia First State District. Monty was twice elected to the House of Delegates in 2013 and 2015 before winning his race for state senate in a special election in November of 2016. During his tenure in the legislature, Monty has worked to improve the child welfare system, protect seniors, serve our veterans, create opportunities for small businesses, and improve education for Virginia's children. His legislative appointments include serving on the Commerce and Labor Committee, Privileges and Elections Committee, Rehabilitation and Social Services Committee, Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources Committee, and General Laws and Technology Committee. Needless to say, Senator Mason is very busy at the General Assembly. Additionally, he serves as Virginia's Legislative Representative to the Atlantic State's Marine Fisheries Commission and was recently appointed to the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, the State Executive Council to the Office of Children's Services, and the State Water Commission. Monty's career in business spans more than 25 years and includes working in real estate and land, America Financial Group, and the financial sector with more than a decade at Visa Inc. in fraud and risk management. Senator Mason, over to you for opening comments.
Hey, good morning. Good morning. That's quite a part-time job, right? Thanks for having me today. I'm going to try to keep this brief because I'd rather get to questions that people really want to talk about, but going into a special session, I think a lot of us are trying to figure out how it's going to work. We had a call last night. I know, you know, obviously, we initially went back just to focus on the budget and the impacts, the dramatic impacts that it's had, the pandemic has had on it. As you know, we unallotted about $2.4 billion worth of things that we put in the budget. Obviously, the matters of the day have led to its expansion to there will most certainly be some criminal justice reform work done, as well as some COVID-related legislation. But I am also pushing to make sure we keep that focused as possible so that we can go back and talk budget in an 80/20 situation because we've got to address some of these matters, no question. We've been working on it for years, and we will address them. But just two weeks ago, Secretary of Finance said we're going to look at about a billion-dollar shortfall in the first year. As of last night, that seems to have moved to 1.4 billion in the first year and at least in both years. So we've got a lot of work to do with a much-changed face of a Virginia state budget. That work will begin on August the 18th. So I'll look forward to answering your questions, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Senator Mason. Next, I'd like to introduce Senator Jen Kiggins. Senator Kiggins, a former Navy pilot who currently serves as a nurse practitioner, was elected to Virginia's 7th Senate District seat in November 2019. Jen serves as a primary care provider for a small private practice in Virginia Beach and has worked in several long-term care and nursing facilities in Virginia Beach and Norfolk. In addition to geriatrics, Jen is a passionate advocate for accessibility, affordability of mental health care, and mental health screening, which is so important right now, as I'm sure you know, Senator. She is a voice for our aging population and their families and has the expertise to make an impactful difference in standards of care. Jen is a member of the American Association of Nurse Practitioners, Virginia Geriatric Society, American Nurses Association, and the American Legion Post 110. She is constantly fighting for local job creation, keeping healthcare costs down, and limiting government spending. As the current representative of the 7th Senate District, Jen serves on the following Senate committees: Local Government Subcommittee on Charters, General Laws and Technology, Subcommittee on Gaming, and Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senator Kiggins, over to you.
Thank you so much, Brian, and thanks for having me today. It's great to see everyone virtually. But so 2020 has been a year like no other, right? I don't think any of us expected it to go this way. So every aspect of our life has been affected, from our day-to-day routines to so much in business. Just I know, you know, personally, my husband's an airline pilot. He hasn't flown since March, so I've got, you know, that. I've got all four of my kids home homeschooling, you know, so. And then I'm busier than ever in a new Senate job that is definitely more than a part-time job and still practicing in the clinic, which with the healthcare industry, we've seen a lot of changes. Just with telemedicine, we had trouble getting our patients to come in for their primary routine care, and now it's getting a little better as we kind of progress through this pandemic. But so many changes on every front. I really applaud our business community out there, who has been brave, and we've asked a lot of them. They have been patient and sticking it out. And, you know, in Virginia, we have over 270,000, I think, businesses, with over 90% of those are small businesses with less than 250 employees. So a lot of small businesses out there, and I understand and appreciate that struggle. I drive through the strip malls just to do my daily errands and see that so many doors are closed and so many just hours are reduced. And I know we, in our office, have answered a lot of calls, helping people with unemployment and helping small businesses get different loans out there. But we need to, it needs to be a group effort on the city, on the state, on the federal level. What can we do to help get our businesses and our small businesses through these challenging times? But I applaud everything that the chamber is doing. I know you guys have done a great job. We went to your Small Business Awards luncheon a couple of weeks ago, and what a great event. You know, we held it in person, we socially distanced, we were six feet apart, everyone had masks on, but we did it safely, but we tried to get out there and do some normal things and just applaud and congratulate our small businesses of the year. So that was an honor to be a part of. But I know there's a lot we're asking of our businesses right now with all of the new Department of Labor and Industry, just initiatives of safety, and asking them to be, you know, mask police, and all these other things that we're asking them to do, protective of their employees and their customers. And so I want to thank them. I know that that's a lot to ask, but thank you for sticking it out and working hard and taking, hopefully, a temporary, you know, pay cut sometimes and just for being persistent because we need all you guys, and we need all you all to keep your doors open and keep Virginia a great place to do business. So thanks again for having me today.
Thank you, Senator Kiggins. We appreciate those comments. Next, I'd like to introduce Delegate Joe Lindsey. Delegate Lindsey serves in the Virginia House of Delegates as a representative for the 90th District. He is a member of the Democratic House Caucus, Virginia Legislative Black Caucus, Hampton Roads Caucus, and the National Black Caucus of State Legislators. Delegate Lindsey serves on the Privileges and Elections Committee, Finance Committee, and Labor and Commerce Committee. He has been serving the legal needs of Hampton Roads since 1984. Joe formerly served as a prosecutor in the Norfolk Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, where he was promoted to Chief Deputy of the Office of the Commonwealth's Attorney. Since 1999, Joe has served as a substitute judge for the Commonwealth of Virginia, presiding over cases in the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Courts and General District Courts of Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, Chesapeake, and Newport News. Joe strongly believes in volunteerism and regularly gives back to his community. He actively volunteers with the American Red Cross in Norfolk, serves as the president of the Hiawatha Social Club, a member of the Poplar Hall Civic League, and on the Board of Directors for Virginia Institute of Law and Citizenship Studies for Virginia Commonwealth University. Delegate Lindsey, welcome. Over to you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate the opportunity to participate in this Zoom forum today. You know, I can tell you that the challenge for small businesses, businesses in general, but small businesses in particular, is nothing like what we're seeing today in this present climate with the pandemic. I've owned a small business, my law practice, since 1995, and, you know, and so I'm right there at ground zero and appreciating some of the special challenges that are presented by this pandemic. I believe that in light of what we have going on, both in terms of the pandemic and likewise in terms of social concerns, that the mood of the day is going to be about the budget reforecast and the benchmarking of priorities, but likewise, it's going to be about social justice initiatives. And I think that, for the most part, is what we're going to be dealing with in the upcoming General Assembly session.
Okay. Thank you, Delegate Lindsey. And that's a good segue, actually, as we wait for Delegate Mieres to dial in because, you know, several months ago, a couple of months ago, I guess, with the unfortunate murder of Mr. Floyd and the racial unrest that has occurred since then, we realized that there are some significant issues with racism in our Commonwealth and in our region. We in the business community wanted to take some definitive actions. And so one of the many things that we have done is to actually appoint a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer. That officer is Mr. Ronnie Parker. Ronnie Parker is a young man with tremendous talents and insights, and we just look forward to all that he has to offer in the area of DNI to our business community. And I'd like for him to maybe make a few comments from the start. Ronnie, over to you.
Thank you so much, Brian. And first and foremost, I want to thank the members of the General Assembly that are with us today. I certainly realize how valuable your time is, and I'm honored to be a part of this discussion. In my role as the Chamber's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer, Brian has really asked me to ensure that everything we do as a chamber is examined from a diversity, equity, and inclusion perspective. He has also asked me to extend the critical perspective to the Hampton Roads business community and to inform and educate where necessary. As a chamber, we encourage those uncomfortable conversations to make sure that we are all aware of the systemic and implicit biases that exist in our business community. Only really then can we take actions to start eradicating these items. We are taking this on, however, because it is the right thing to do, and we truly believe that diversity, equity, and inclusion is a business imperative. So I personally look forward to working with each of you as we work towards a more inclusive business environment, and I'm really excited to hear what you all have planned to address these systemic issues that are really plaguing the women and minority business owners and how the chamber can help to do its part. So thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to be in discussion.
Thank you, Ronnie. We appreciate those comments, and more importantly, we appreciate all the work that you're going to do in the years to come in this very important area. What we're going to do now is I'm actually going to turn it over to our Executive Director of Government Affairs, Emily Hasty, and she is going to take us through a question-and-answer period. And Emily, all I'd say is that when we see Delegate Mieres dial in, we could maybe pause and give him a few minutes to talk. But for everybody that's on the call, if you have a question, I think Ronnie put some instructions in the chat box, but if you have a question, please go to the chat box, or if you look down at the bottom right-hand corner of your Zoom screen, there's a Q&amp;A session. You can post a question there, or just let us know that you have a question, and we'll open the mic for you and let you ask your question. So with that, Emily, I'll turn it over to you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Brian. And yes, I did just get a message from Delegate Mieres. He's going to be logging on. I'm just going to say just a few comments, and then I know that everyone wants to hear from the legislators. It is truly a pleasure to be with each of you this morning. It is a privilege to represent and advocate on behalf of the business community year-round and specifically at the General Assembly session. As we are quickly approaching the August 18th special session, and we thought it would be beneficial to have our Hampton Roads delegation here to speak on these issues we may expect and the goals looking to be achieved as it relates to the budget, COVID-19, and racism through a business perspective. As Ronnie has just stated as well, we are truly looking to advocate on behalf of business through a diverse lens. These are unprecedented times that we are currently in, and we are thankful to you legislators and the work that you do for the good of the Commonwealth. So we just thank you so much for being with us today. Again, like Brian had said, we're going to go into this question-and-answer portion. Some of our members have already sent us some questions, which is very helpful to go ahead and get those answered. If you do have any additional questions, please, like they were saying, put it in the chat or the question-and-answer box at the bottom. While we are waiting on Delegate Mieres to sign in, you know, we'll go ahead and go into the Department of Labor and Industries Safety and Health Codes Board. On July 15th, they voted on these new emergency regulations. Our question is, what specific liabilities does a business have regarding the enforcement of these new regulations? Senator Mason, we can start with you on this one.
Well, we might want to start with our lawyer with some ideas on that. You know, I think there are guidelines to try to keep employees, as Brian said, guidelines to try to keep employees and customers safe throughout the course of this. So I think that is number one, the goal. And, you know, so it's also something that every business owner wants to do, is trying to do as well. So hopefully, this gives some guideline. I see Jason has joined us now. So we have our second lawyer, so who can help us with the legal elements of it. You want me to let Jason say hi?
Sure, sure.
Hi, guys.
We're so happy that you could join us, Delegate Mieres.
It looks like this is the second webcast I've done in 24 hours with Joe Lindsey, so I hope he doesn't get tired of me staying with you guys.
We'll give you a couple of minutes just to do an intro, and we just actually started on question one, so we'll be wrapping you in that question as well as Delegate Lindsey on this matter, but we'll give you a couple of minutes just to say a few opening comments.
Yeah. Jason, I'd like to introduce you first because I think it's good that everybody has a brief understanding of your background here. Delegate Mieres, in November of 2015, won the open seat to the 82nd District for the House of Delegates by the widest margin in the district's history while becoming the first Cuban-American ever elected to the Virginia General Assembly. In the House of Delegates, he serves on the General Laws Courts of Justice and Transportation Committees, where he has advanced legislation on coastal flooding, improving education, transparency in government, and regulatory reform. In 2019, Mieres advanced landmark legislation, which makes it easier for small business owners to provide childcare services as a benefit to their employees. A former prosecutor, Assistant Commonwealth Attorney for the City of Virginia Beach, Mieres worked to keep our most violent criminals off the streets and our families safe. Prior to his service in the Virginia House, he served as a senior advisor to former Congressman Scott Ridgell. Delegate Jason Mieres' passion is building the right environment in Virginia for job creation, flooding mitigation, restoring funding for the Virginia Beach Public Schools, fiscal discipline and government transparency, as well as repealing burdensome regulations that are hurting Virginia small business owners, which was part of my opening comments, Delegate Mieres. So with that, over to you for a couple of opening comments.
I mean, I appreciate the eulogy, Brian. That was nice. No, it's an honor to serve. I think we're facing challenging times. I think we've never seen anything like this before, and if you think about what our life was like March 1st versus what our life is like heading into August 1st, it's like a different world. I think we're in the first government-mandated recession in U.S. history. That's kind of where we are, and as a result, government's going to have to try to figure out a way to respond. And we really have a lot on our plate in August when we go back on a host of issues, but my personal hope is, obviously, we can address some, perhaps, some liability protection, some safe harbors for those businesses dealing with COVID-19, because, you know, you talk to these small business owners, and they're all asking, what's next, and how do we handle X, Y, and Z? And I think all of us are trying to do our very best to figure it out, and I think it's going to take all of us working together to try to find the best way to, you know, both reopen Virginia and get our economy back going again. But it's great to be here.
Thank you. Emily, why don't you restate that first question and then?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sure. So the question was, on July 15th, the Department of Labor and Industry Safety and Health Codes Board voted on the new emergency regulation. What specific liabilities does a business have regarding the enforcement of these new regulations? I don't see Delegate Lindsey on this one. I think his video has cut off. We're going to get back to him to be able to answer this, but Delegate Mieres, do you want to have a stab at that one?
I'm sorry, you cut out real quick. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, sure. In regards to the new emergency regulations that the Department of Labor and Industry, the Safety and Health Codes Board put out, that they released and voted on, what specific liabilities does a business have regarding the enforcement of these new regulations?
Well, I mean, I'm curious what Joe and some of my colleagues think, but generally, the impression I've gotten from the administration is they're not looking to put people in jail or prosecute because they violate some of these standards. That's not the intent of the administration. I think the most of what they are discussing would be if you're in violation, they're going to try to warn you. And I think what their hope is that we all can be, just practice smart, sensible policy. The quickest way for this thing to end, quite frankly, is for people to be responsible, practice social distancing, wear a mask when they're, you know, in public gatherings, and for businesses to be smart as well. And if you're tired of this lockdown, as I know I am, then everybody's going to have to have some sense of responsibility as well. But I don't think business, I don't think, if there's a word for businesses, I think that the government's going to shut down and try to prosecute them on some. I know that some of these are penalties as much as Class 1 misdemeanors. That's, I don't think that's going to happen. I can see that restaurants are going to lose their licenses potentially if restaurants act egregiously, but I don't see there's going to be anything specific. At least I have not heard of any. If people have, you know, they could put it on my radar, but I have not heard of anything at all.
Sure. Delegate Lindsey, are you still with us?
Well, and I'll add to that. I think Jason did a nice job of saying that. But it's almost like, even the way you ask the question, regulation bad, business good. Rather than what specific things in this list are we going to be liable for, I would appreciate the, hey, we're all doing these things. I mean, we got it. We got to do our part of, if there are 11 things on the chart, we have to do these eight, and we've been doing them. That's the only way we can protect you and be in business. But, hey, General Assembly, these three are really hard. How do I do it? I mean, I don't, it's not my, it's not my role. And this one right here, I don't completely understand. So I think we, as legislators and working with the chamber, can play a role in going back and saying, hey, wow, that, this one's hard to figure out. And this is not a particular position for, what did you, you know, getting more clarification on particulars.
Sure. Thank you for those comments, Senator Mason.
I agree with Senator Mason, just as far as, you know, I don't know if we got a lot of input from our business community before we put all these rules and regulations in place, so I would have liked kind of an opportunity for some of them to interact a little more to say, yes, these are something we can do, these are something that don't apply, and maybe divide it up a little bit better. But I support a safe harbor rule. I think Jason Mieres mentioned just about liability protections. You know, our businesses are doing the best job they can following CDC guidance, and, you know, as long as you guys are putting in the effort, you have the signs in place, you're wearing the mask, you're having the customers wear the masks as well. You know, I agree that punishing them or removing licenses, I don't think that's the goal of anyone, but we really just, I think the emphasis of, we really have to work together. This is a group effort. Everyone needs to wear their mask. Everyone needs to do the guidance that's been put out by healthcare workers so that we can work through this.
I don't know where Emily went. Delegate Lindsey, any comments on that question?
I guess I look at it a little different than some of the thoughts that have already been shared. I think that we are in a very critical time in history, and I think that the loss of human life is very real, and especially as it relates to, you know, certain groups that have underlying health issues and even persons of color. You know, and, you know, and as I see the regulations, and some of them are tough, but, you know, but they're applying to all businesses, and they're being uniform in their application to all of us, you know, and I'm a small business owner likewise. I think that it's kind of, you know, I don't think that there is a set answer as to how it's going to play out in terms of the legal aspect of it, you know, because, you know, this is going to be an opportunity for new law, and I expect that there's going to be litigation. There's always litigation. Well, you know, we as lawyers, we're always filing cases to advocate for the, for the groups we represent. You know, are there going to be some challenges that make doing business a little harder? Absolutely. Should they be so draconian as to be putting people out of business? Yeah, I don't think that that should be the option, you know, and I think that we should have consideration for our business owners. Some of, you know, what was alluded to, as I understood the question about what's going to happen in terms of insurance coverage and, you know, and who should be accountable for what, I just think we're going to work our way through that. But I do believe that that happens by continuing dialogue, a dialogue with the administration, a dialogue with legislators, and a dialogue with the business community, and that's part of the reason why you see us here today.
And I apologize, guys. My video has cut off, and I'm working on that one right now, but I do have another question, and I appreciate all the feedback received on that last question. Moving on more of the budget side, in light of the COVID-19 economic crisis, what spending priorities would you recommend changes to in the upcoming special session? Does anyone want to take a stab at that one? Senator Kiggins, we can start with you on this one.
I'll just mention my bill that I introduced for special session, that does have some fiscal impact, although there's some debate about it. We're working on getting a new fiscal impact study, but one of my priorities is getting our kids back in school, just as a mom who's watching my own kids and their friends. And, you know, I think we can all agree that we want our children in schools. The question is, how are we going to do it safely? And I do hear the other side, and I hear the moms that are concerned, I hear the staff, the teachers, the bus drivers, you know, everyone is concerned, and then the kids that perhaps get it there and bring it home. So, you know, as a healthcare provider, I understand that. I understand populations that are at risk. I understand, although the children may not be the most vulnerable, you know, they can be carriers too, and so I appreciate everyone that has those concerns. So I wanted to address them. What can I bring to the table that will make parents, staff, and students, you know, feel safe to be back in the classroom? So I have a school nurse bill that requires a nurse in every school. This bill is not new. It's been brought before to the General Assembly and has not been passed due to some costs associated with it. You know, many schools have school nurses in place, but you'd be surprised how many do not. And especially now, you know, times have changed. It's not the same Virginia that it was. So I think having that healthcare provider in place that can help to implement infection control, you know, possibly help with tracking, help making sure the kids have masks, there's hand sanitizers out, do a lot of education. Nurses are wonderful health educators, so really taking advantage of this time to educate everyone, but especially students, on infection prevention. And not only that, you know, use those school nurses, you know, how about some nutrition, you know, exercise, like health maintenance? So I'm obviously a big supporter of nurses and just healthcare providers and educators. So that's a priority for me, getting kids back in school. How can we do it safely? So that's just a personal priority, but.
Sure, sure. Thank you. And Senator Mason, what spending priorities would you recommend changes to in the upcoming year?
Well, Jason and I were on a call earlier, and we had a little disagreement about how much we love the budget that we had, but I realized how much I liked the budget when I saw all of the monies that was on the lot. And it is And it is, there were a lot of good things in there. And so trying to figure out how we allot, especially with the substantial revenue shortfall that continues to grow by the week, unfortunately, it is going to be extremely difficult. I was just appointed to the Deeds Commission, which I requested, because one of the things that I was shocked to find is how much time I spent on mental health issues. And I feel like I should spend 40 hours a week every time I do it. Right now, our system is in crisis. Every one of several of our state mental state hospitals have stopped taking patients. Eastern State is always completely at capacity, well beyond capacity. They figure 80, 85% is at or above capacity. Last Thursday, we had 297 patients in a 307-bed facility. Those 10 beds were being held for quarantine and COVID. So I think that our CSBs are preparing for many additional patients, most of, very much like the last recession, many of which are unknown to them. They are going to be overwhelmed. Our state-run hospitals are at or beyond capacity now. And I think to Jen's point, you know, I have a 12 and a 10-year-old. I am not a very good teacher and we need to, but the stress and the pressure on our children. We had a lot of child welfare money and trying to raise the money for social services employees. That's been unallotted. So I am very concerned and think we have to look towards much of, some of the money that we put towards mental health and towards our child welfare system in anticipation of what I believe will be a big crunch. I intentionally mentioned this to a business group. A year or so ago, the United Way on the Peninsula did a survey, and they talked of all the things that are, there were buckets of what is important to your business. Interestingly, mental health was one that was way down the list in the business bucket, was in the top one or two in all of the other groups that were polled. And so I think it's important for us and for me to make sure that I make the point to the business world in that, you know, as Jen knows, when your employee doesn't report because they're taking care of your mother, or your employee doesn't report because they're trying to help their child, you know, family matters and mental health really impacts business a great deal. And I think we're getting ready to see a big, big crunch regarding it now.
Sure. Couldn't agree more. Thank you. Delegate Lindsey, which spending priorities would you recommend?
I think that they're obviously far more brave than am I. I'm not going to recommend cutting anyone's budget at this point in time. I'm going to do a lot of listening. Right now, you know, we're doing some re-benchmark efforts to see just the degree of our crisis, our fiscal crisis. We're also looking at different measures. It's, you know, it's real easy to say, you know, as some people have done historically in this body, oh, well, we're going to, we're going to cut from education, or we're going to cut from mental health, or we're going to cut from social services. I'm just not there yet. I want to be prudent. I want to be practical. And I want to take a discerning view when I look at the whole picture. Because, you know, because taking from one area is going to impact all other areas. We've got some social issues that typically, you know, people say, well, we've had funding for them, but we'll put that off for now. We've got education concerns that typically we've said, oh, we'll put that off for now. I want to be a good steward of the numbers. But as to having made a decision as to where the cutting needs to take place, you know, you know, I know the, you know, one way to do it for some is to say, well, for all agencies, we need to have a decrease in spending by 5% or something like that. So I'm just not at that point. I just want to continue to be educated and then we'll see where we go.
Okay. Thank you, Delegate Lindsey. Delegate Mieres, do you want to add a comment to that one?
Yeah, I mean, I think Senator Mason and I mentioned we have a different view of the state budget. We knew back in March when he passed the state budget what was coming down the pike, in my opinion. COVID-19 was already spreading. It was clear we were going to hit an economic recession. I did not personally think that a state budget that had an 18% increase in one year and 36 different tax and fee increases was a smart thing to pass when it was clearly not the recipe, from my opinion, how are we going to get our economy back moving again? That's number one. So now we're going to have to make some hard choices, and we're going to have to make even harder choices. My fear is in January, because I think this quarter of a billion is, I think, manageable. The question is, what is it going to be when we get back? And then touching a little bit what Senator Keagans noted. One of my frustrations, sometimes that happens in government, is they make decisions and they think they're making decisions in a vacuum. That does not happen. And we are facing a critical mental health crisis in this country, as has been noted. You just had the CDC come out with guidelines last week that said kids should be back in school. The America's Society of Pediatricians have said kids should be back in school. For children that have learning disabilities, this has been the single most devastating thing in their young life, because they got, schools were shut down in March. Even if we were going to start after Labor Day, that's six months. Now we're talking about probably November. And so we're literally losing a year for these children that can't lose a year. And that probably is the single most distressing thing that I have seen when I've talked to parents, and I have three school-aged children as well. I agree with Senator Mason. I am lacking in the homeschooling skills. And that has been a, that has been a challenge as well. But you can't make these decisions in a vacuum. I saw another study that showed about 75,000 Americans are expected to die from depression and deaths of despair, totally unrelated from COVID-19, but it's because of that isolation. And if you ever had a loved one that has dealt with depression or addiction, they will tell you isolation is the single worst trap they can find themselves in. That's exactly what we put on our economy. And so I think you have to weigh those factors in on what's a smart, reasonable, balanced approach to reopen the economy, to reopen our schools. But we can't naively think that we can make these decisions in a vacuum, and there's not going to be a side effect. The fact that we had two months of closure of non-elective surgeries. I have somebody very, that's a close personal friend that has pancreatic cancer, could not get in to see the oncologist for some preliminary because of the shutdown. And now, for the first time in 25 years, first time in 25 years after having a downward slope in cancer survival rates in a positive direction, this is the first year in 25 years that actually you can have a higher death rate from cancer precisely because of these decisions that I think people think are made in a vacuum, and there's not. There is a ripple effect that is happening in our society. It is one of the most heartbreaking things to see what's happening to our kids, what's happening to our mental health, what's happening to those that are struggling with addiction. So we can't make these decisions in a vacuum. You have to have a balanced approach where you weigh all the factors, and that includes what's going on with our businesses. And I think that's the type of discussion that I'm not seeing being played out too often, and that frustrates me, as you could probably tell from my voice.
Let me jump back in real quick. You know, I heard of all of what Jason said, but where I'm lost is, what is your recommendation for the budget?
Well, I think we got here partially because of some bad decisions in March. I think, to be candid with you, I mean, I know we have to agree to disagree. I think we made some bad decisions. We're probably going to have to look at some tough decisions on where we're going to have to reduce promised spending, or we're going to have to slow the rate of growth. We made some promises to a lot of different individuals based on an economic forecast from numbers that we got in December, when the economy was at a 3.8% unemployment. By the time we voted on the budget, we obviously saw things were slowing down, and that we didn't really, I think, make an adjustment anticipating where we're going to be. And so I think we are exactly where was my worst fear, which is we passed the budget based on overly optimistic economic assumptions from revenue estimates that dated back to December. And that forecast, by the time we voted on the budget, it was clear that wasn't going to, that wasn't going to hold. So we're going to have to really slow the rate of growth in certain areas, and it's going to, and I don't envy the people on Appropriations Committee. You guys are going to have to do a lot of heavy lifting. But that's my, that's my only complaint. Good and reasonable, people disagree. I know Joe has a totally different view of it, and that's fine. But that's just my personal opinion, is we kind of are stuck in a position now we have to make even harder decisions.
I'm not saying that I disagree with you. I just still don't know that I've gotten an answer, at least for my purposes, as to where we make the cut. Do you have any areas that you believe should be cut?
Well, Joe, I'm not on appropriations. And so what I look forward to, the people that are the subject matter experts coming to us and giving us a recommendation, we're going to have to balance the budget required by law, and we're going to see where they, where they make those cuts. I mean, you've indicated that you're not comfortable with a across-the-board 5% cut. I understand that. But we're going to have to, we're going to have to get there. We just are. I mean, we don't have, we have a constitutional obligation to. So whether we like it or not, we're going to balance the budget, and it's going to inevitably end up cutting, cutting growth in certain departments that, that somebody's not going to be happy about. And that's, those are going to be the hard choices we have to make now.
I know Emily probably wants to jump to another question, but one thing that surprised me was us going back the day that the governor speaks to the money committees. So we're going to go back in session the day that we probably get our first view of what a framework around the budget would be. And I was expecting us to go back a week or so after so that we could digest a fair amount of that and be able to hit the ground running. But it looks like we're going to have to do that on the fly in the first few days. So that was a bit of a surprise to me.
Well, thank you for that comment. And Jen, you can go ahead.
Just a quick, to tag team off what Jason talked about a little bit, about isolation. And I agree with what everyone said about the mental health, just repercussions of what's happened since this crisis has occurred. But I think there's some non-budgetary changes we can make as well, things that don't have a cost, especially looking at our long-term care facilities. That is a group that is just so, we have isolated not only the patients, but their families, and the ways we have affected the health of those guys that are our most vulnerable patient population, the death rates. I mean, out of 2,000 deaths in Virginia, 1,200 have been in nursing homes. This is an already very vulnerable group. So there's some things that we can push for as far as a little less isolation. There's, I see a lot of lack of communication. I'd really like to see our facilities facilitate virtual visits socially. You can do physical, socially distant visits. We've seen a lot of creativity come out of some long-term care facilities, nursing homes, that, that help to alleviate this isolation. If we don't deal with these isolation issues and delineate how we're going to solve them now, we're going to see horrible results in the future. And then, you know, the outpatient community that Jason and Monty talked about, just about the kids and the people who are vulnerable, who are psych patients at home, that's a whole nother piece that we really need to think about. Because just healthcare-wise, you know, we didn't have people come to the clinic for so long. And now that they're coming back, I see people that didn't take their meds. They didn't go to the pharmacy to get their medications for months. They sat in their homes and ate food that wasn't good for them. They've all gained weight. Their blood sugars, cholesterol, and blood pressure are all up. And we're prescribing more antidepressants and more anti-anxiety meds than ever. So I think as far as healthcare costs, you know, we always talk about reducing healthcare costs, and what can we do? Well, I mean, we're going to see a rise in healthcare costs just because we have created this unhealthy patient population, both physically and mentally. So one thing to think about just going forward.
Thank you all for your comments. We do have a couple of questions coming in through the chat. So Ronnie, if you want to unmute Markel Bonds.
Markel, you're good to ask your question now.
Good morning. How are you doing? I just had a quick question, really a series of questions, but just asking what type of legislation you guys plan on introducing in face of this Black Lives Matter movement and the disparities that exist in our prison system, especially in Virginia. African-Americans make up 19% of Virginia, but 55% of our prison population. So one question is, how can you guys dispel that disparity in overpolicing, overarrests? Another aspect of that is assessing cases that have to do with marijuana-related charges, especially with it being decriminalized in Virginia, will those cases be reassessed and sentences lessened? And then another aspect is looking at our police system and its community relations. A lot of the best practices and best examples come from places such as Minneapolis. They have a high community policing presence. So how can we look at the policing with the community relations? Will we be looking at mandatory community service hours? In a sense, how can you police a neighborhood where you don't know anybody? So just, just some questions about those things.
This is where we have that uncomfortable pause. So why don't I, you know, and I designate Monty and Mason to answer that question. No, all jokes aside, this is a very serious issue. And, you know, and it is, you know, it is one of the chief social moments of the day. I don't know that there is any one answer to, to, to that very diverse, you know, problem area. I, you know, there's no question that we as lawmakers have to give confidence to our citizens and the belief that, that they are safe to walk and live life and be members of the community. But at the same time, I think that there's some risk of overreach. And for me personally, my thought is that we have to have a balanced process that looks at some of the, you know, systemic racism that has been, you know, proven and shown. And also look at, make sure that we don't be in such a hurry to respond, that we, that we respond inappropriately.
Monty, you want to?
Well, I think Joe, I think Joe makes the point. A lot of people that I've talked to around this situation have either called me or come into this office thinking we are all anti-police or, you know, 100 on one way or zero on the other. And I think Joe's exactly right. We always risk, as a legislature, reacting to something that happened. You know, the bed of last resort in the mental health world. We certainly want to make sure that no one's left out on the street if they need help. And yet, we pass legislation that has every state hospital at 100-plus percent capacity. So we have to be super careful about overreach in what we do. We have to be supportive of our first responders and police that protect us and help us. But we have to also make sure that policies and procedures are in place that do not ever allow for the things that we've seen. And the outrage is warranted and understood. The thing, one of the things that jumped out at me was the number of, the anonymity of cases against a police officer, you know, when, and you know that if you're in the business long enough, people are going to say, you treated me poorly, and it'll be researched, and it's unfounded. Yeah, you treated your police, we arrested you for doing something illegal. But we should have access to that. Mason had a complaint, the complaint was this, it was investigated in this way, and it was unfounded. Or Mason had a complaint, the complaint was this, we've investigated it, and this was found. And this, so I think we need access to that type of information. Certainly, you ask about marijuana. We started making some moves last session towards addressing small amounts of marijuana. But there's also a study in place that we did not change the timeline because we want to make sure we do that properly as well. So a lot of these changes have been a long time coming. But I think we have to make sure that the emotion of the moment doesn't lead us to do something that will have unintended consequences. When there are a number of baseline things, and I think this is another important, you know, this group works together pretty well. But I think it's super important that these are bipartisan changes. You know, that both sides agree this has to be addressed, and we address it together. I don't, I don't want to, and I hope, I'm hopeful for that. And a lot of the conversations I've had, I think that will be the case, and we'll see some of that. So I hope that that'll be a hallmark of the discussions that we had.
Yeah, I mean, I think my perspective is that holding police officers accountable and getting bad police officers out of the force, I think, is something everybody's going to agree on. And the point that I've made to people is, the reason why we have to hold the police to such an incredibly high standard is they're the only members of our society that have a monopoly on violence. That's just the way it is. They have a monopoly on the use of violence in our society legally, under the law. Unless it's some rare case where it's a justifiable self-defense, police officers are the only one that literally have the force of law to use violence against a fellow citizen. And as a result, we have to hold them to an incredibly high standard. So I think that's the first thing. I think you're going to see a lot of bipartisan support. The question's going to be the larger discussion of criminal justice reform. I think you could have kind of two philosophical, perhaps, divides that go there. And so there may be some stuff that happens that you could have wide bipartisan support. You may have some reforms that probably get passed on a more of a party-line vote. But my hope is that, as Monty and I think Joe and Jen would all But my hope is that, as, as Monty and I think Joe and Jen would all agree, the vast majority of the legislation we work on in Richmond oftentimes is, is bipartisan or almost, a lot of it's unanimous. It's always that kind of 20 to 30% of legislation that could get the most contentious, but the majority of the stuff we actually can work on and, and get stuff passed in a collaborative fashion.
Senator Keegan, do you want to add to that?
Just a quick comment. We've been in some great discussions recently with our Sheriff Staley here in Virginia Beach and some of the police department down here. And, and he frequently speaks about how he's running the largest mental health facility in, in the state of Virginia. And I've heard him use numbers that close to 80% of his, his prison population is our mental health patients. So, and I know that they've, they've made some great strides and we are doing a good job of diagnosing, treating, you know, discharging the prisoners with their medications, you know, with follow up appointments. But my question then becomes, what about the continuum of care? Because these, that population is at most risk for being non compliant with their medication, not following up where they need to be. And if they don't continue that care, then we see them as repeat offenders and back in prison. And I think the goal is to, of all of us, is to keep those people out of prison. So how, what can we do better addressing those mental health, that mental health population, which is 80% close to of the, of the prison population? You know, how can we help them in the community so that they, they can stay out of our jails and prisons and, and we can keep them healthy in our community?
Sure, sure. Thank you for those comments. And before we start to wrap up, we do have another question from Emmanuel with King Cuts. Ronnie, do you want to unmute him?
Emmanuel, you're good to ask your question now.
If not, I can ask it for him. I'll go ahead, just because we are limited on time. The military is a major economic support for businesses in the Hampton Roads community. As a result of COVID, harder restrictions have been put on the local military and it has had a devastating effect on business, especially those on their list of businesses that they are not allowed to attend. What is being done to help those on their list?
Yeah, I just want to, I'm assuming he's talking about the additional restrictions that the, that the Department of Navy has put on their sailors. They're not allowed now until further notice to, to go in the restaurants, to, to go in the bars, to go to any public gathering of any kind. And we've received here at the chamber, a lot of complaints about that, but that is a Department of the Navy decision, the local Navy Fleet Forces Command and the Navy Mid Atlantic is just following orders. But the question I think was, is there any consideration at the General Assembly for any assistance to those businesses that are being most impacted by the lack of patron with the Navy personnel? It sounds like it's, it, it may be news to everybody, so.
I, I just have a quick comment about, not so much about, because I think the entire, at least business community in Hampton Roads, where so much of our population is military, and I know that that affects especially businesses that are close to base, just being in discussions with pharmaceutical companies about the vaccine and the, the progression of development of the vaccine, you know, they, they do mention that military will be a priority, and I, and I agree with that. I think that that needs to be a priority of, so when the vaccine comes, we can't all get it the same day. So how are, are we gonna prioritize, you know, who's vaccinated? So I have heard that mentioned, I haven't seen it written anywhere, but, but I, I think that, that's something to keep in mind. I know our, our military is affected, my, my son at the Naval Academy is locked on the yard for, for the entire semester. They're not letting those guys out at all in Annapolis. So that was after 14 days of quarantine and a couple COVID tests. So, you know, and then we have ships that are at sea and are not coming back. So, you know, just because they are safe at sea, so now it's like you, you sign up to join the Navy and see the world and you're, you're gonna be on that ship for eight to nine months. Our deployments are longer than ever and, and you're not doing any fun port tours. So, so, you know, Godspeed to those guys. It's a hard job, so I'm, I'm thankful that, you know, we're, we're all kind of paying the price. It's, 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 I know it affects the businesses locally, but again, I'm hopeful that, that they'll reprioritize when the vaccine does come, which I think will happen. You know, we need to all keep that in mind, too. They're, they're working hard and I hear good things almost daily about this, the trial phases that they're in. So I think January, February is a date that I hear a lot. So, and I think once that vaccine hits, then I'm at least so full of some normalcy will return for all of us.
Yeah. That, so, Brian, you, you're right. I, I didn't even know about the, the Department of the Navy thing. But I think the question highlights the enormous challenge that we had because in the, on the Upper Peninsula, what have I been hearing? Hey, what specific tourism related relief are you gonna have for businesses that are at 10% of where they were this time last year? Hotels, restaurants, you know, Busch Gardens, you know, couldn't open with 1,000 people, now they're gonna do some one off individual days and specific, you know, that is demolishing an industry built around the tourist rate. And so there are so many examples of, of this pandemic just devastating sections and quadrants of business that I don't know how we begin to pick and choose who to target, you know? And so that makes it the broad brush, which, you know, often leaves people and things out. I mean, the PPP, the, 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 by all accounts, Virginia did a very good job of getting money from that program. But what did you need? An established banking relationship. And so that immediately left small operators in some places out in the cold that didn't have that solid established relationship that they could, on day one, call and implement and, and put in place. So, you know, figuring out how we get help to wide swaths of industry and at the same time not leaving people out, we haven't done a very good job of it to this point. And I think there are more challenges to come, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think that's the, the overarching question. Obviously, there are certain businesses, certain business industries that are disproportionately affected by this. And obviously, the restrictions that the Navy has put on their, their sailors is, is added to that. So Emily, I think we're coming to a close. Would you like to, to ask the legislators for some closing comments?
Yeah, yeah. If you just wanna go around, Senator Mason, we'll start with you. If you just wanna wrap us up, and we'll give each of you a few minutes, a couple seconds to wrap us up.
Well, real quickly, just thanks for having us. You know, I think we're making the best of this. Jason and I did one a couple of months ago. We closed with, boy, we sure do wish we could sit next to each other and do this. Jen and I are talking about some senior issues and trying to set up a tour for the two of us to go talk to some folks. When can we do that? I think we're chomping at the bit. I never, I never thought I'd miss the slick chicken circuit, but boy, I sure would like to sit and have lunch with you somewhere. But, so thanks for having us. Reach out to us individually and, you know, I always say, you, these are good folks to work with and make sure you know your legislators because we're a citizen bunch, we live and work with you, and knowing us by name and knowing what you're thinking is critical to how we proceed. So thanks for having us. I enjoy doing these things with you.
Sure, sure. Thank you so much for joining us. Delegate Mieres, I know you have to jump off. If you want to go ahead and make a couple comments.
It's just good to see my friends from the legislature here. Somebody sent me a meme the other day that said, check on your extrovert friends, they're not doing too well these days. And it's been, it's been hard. I miss seeing my friends and my colleagues and just people, and hopefully we can all continue to try to build a better Virginia and, and just thanks again for having me. Thanks for everything you guys do.
Sure, thank you so much, Jason. We appreciate it. Delegate Lindsay, do you want to wrap up?
We're, we're unprecedented at times and it's gonna take some courageous steps by, by our citizen legislators. And, and I, I will tell you that there's no, you know, quick answer, there's no easy answer, but, you know, but, but I have every confidence in, you know, and the people I serve with that, that we're gonna put shoulder to the will and, and we're gonna put the work in. So, you know, so with that, you know, I say thank you for an opportunity to participate today.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And Senator Keegan?
Likewise, thank you very much for just putting this together and inviting us all to be a part. And we look forward to helping the business community recover. Just everyone needs to hang in there and be patient and, you know, this too shall end. And, and I just appreciate everyone doing their part and keeping their doors open. So let us know how we can help.
Thank you so much. And thank you to all of our members for joining in and definitely our legislators, you are valued. The work that you do is just phenomenal. So thank you for everything and we'll be in constant communication moving forward. Thanks so much.
Thanks again. It'll be good.